Yeah. It is six thirty PM and I call this meeting to order. Please stand and we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the Father.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council and for the third time since March twenty twenty is being held in person with all members present. As we are no longer operating under the state emergency procedures, votes will be conducted on a voice call rather than roll call unless requested by a member. Tonight, I've got a few comments. I have been lucky enough to be able to attend a few recent events. The first one was a couple of weeks ago, I'm sorry, last week, we had the first stop from American Cruise Lines, the America paddle boat. Was the first one to come through of, I believe, twenty-six stops that we'll be having this year from American Cruise Lines. Got to do a proclamation, handed it off to the youngest captain in their fleet, who actually started off, Captain Matt Kelly was his name, he started off as a deckhand and worked his way all the way up to captain. He had piloted the America for three years before he had taken over as captain. So that was neat to meet everybody and every single person that I talked to, who was on the boat, who came back from the excursions during the day thoroughly enjoyed Winona. They were extremely impressed with the stops and the friendliness of the people in general. So thank you to everybody who was involved in that and in general to the people of Winona. One thing I will mention is if you have a retail location downtown, I would, I would highly suggest that you look at your schedule and the boat's schedule and try to be open during those times. Because it does seem as though there were quite a few not only customers on the cruise line, but also staff that wanted to get off and go spend some money in town. So if you have that opportunity as a retail shop owner or restaurant, I would highly suggest looking at those times. Also, this past Saturday, I was lucky enough to be able to go to Smingus Dingus, part of the Kachubian Festival. And Smingus Dingus means wet Monday, but on Monday, there aren't a whole lot of people around. So we did it on Saturday down at Sobieski and Gabor Park. I had a blast and I worked the slingshot, Giant Slingshot Station. I had never been able to use a Giant Slingshot before and it was awesome. We were able to get those about fifty, sixty yards out, although it was a four-person operation. So we went through about six hundred water balloons in my two-hour shift there. We tried to leave about six hundred for the next shift. But again, just a really cool event down at a phenomenal facility that's been redone. And I would highly suggest that you try to make it next year if you, so thanks again. City Manager Steve Sarvee?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to reiterate, I saw the team that really planned those events. But the real driving force was Councilmember Alexander. So thank you so very much for all your hard work. And there's events to come and our Polish friends will be visiting us next year, I believe. And so again, job well done.
Your turn.
In the roll call?
Yep.
Mayor Sherman?
Here.
Councilman Young?
Here.
Moller?
Here.
Alexander?
Here.
Ayden?
Here.
Orzakowski?
Here.
Rapinski?
Here.
Quick reminder that the public is not allowed to speak during these agenda items unless you have a request before the council and I have given you permission to speak.
Under the petitions, requests and communications, item three point one is a temporary wine and malt liquor license for the arts of the rural. Move approval of that license? Second?
We have a motion by Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point two is a request by the Winona ORC to hold the Starlight Stroll on Friday, November fifth.
I'd make a motion to approve that request. Second?
We have a motion by Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Just real quickly, I'd like to say I've done this race quite a few times. It's really cool because it's at night, so you're running in the dark and they give you a bunch of glow sticks and things to hang around your neck. So if you have the opportunity, even if you want to walk, it is a fun event to go to. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point three is the appointment to the planning commission of James Goldblush.
Don't move.
Second?
We have a motion by George, a second from Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point four is the Winona State University street closure request for their home football games. I'd move approval of those requests. Second?
We have a motion by Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? George?
Oh, you want to talk about a good time? This is a good time. Those football games are fun before and after and during.
Absolutely. Thank you, George. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point five is a request by Winona State University for their move-in days. I'd make a motion to approve those requests. Second?
Leave a motion by Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Go ahead, Michelle.
Like summer just started, but anyway, I guess here we are.
That's part of getting old, Michelle.
Thanks.
It is a little different this year. Is it not longer? Is that correct than normal?
Correct. It's over a series of days instead of one or two days.
Okay, so the public should be aware that those streets will be closed a little bit longer this year. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point six is a request for school zone parking to be added on Wabashaw Street by Cotter Schools.
I'd make a motion to introduce the attached ordinance.
Second. We'll take the motion from Michelle, second from George. Any discussion? I did have a quick question on when those spots are repurposed, we'll be doing repainting and signage of those spots?
Just signage.
Just signage for those? Okay, no painting necessary?
No.
Okay.
There's already stalls marked out and everything there.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point seven is a request for no parking, loading and unloading zone to be added on Wabashaw Street by Cotter Schools.
I'll make a motion to introduce the attached ordinance. Second?
Motion by Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion?
It's Cotter night.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point eight is a request for twenty-minute parking to be added on Wabashaw Street by Cotter Schools.
I make a motion to introduce the attached ordinance. Second?
We have a motion by Michelle and a second from Pam. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
And final request from Cotter is item three point nine, request for handicap parking on Wabashaw Street.
I'd make a motion to introduce the attached ordinance. Second?
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion?
Oh, it looks like they're getting ready to open up their new school. That's great. That's great.
Landscaping was getting done, I think. Any other comments, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point ten is request for no parking, loading and unloading to be added on Second Street by Sammy's Pizza.
I'd make a motion to introduce the attached ordinance. Second?
We have a motion by Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? I would like to say that I'm impressed with the fact that two businesses worked together on this, Sammy's and.
Port Five.
Seven, yep. So thank you to both those business owners for working on that. Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes.
Under unfinished business, item four point one is to award the contract for the Broadway pedestrian ramp improvement project.
I'd make a motion to adopt the attached resolution awarding the contract contingent upon approval of the Office of Civil Rights, the lowest responsible bidder who looks like it's Chippewa Concrete Services. Second?
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Brian or Ryan, do you have anything to add to this at all?
No, they're slightly higher than engineers estimate, but from what we've seen with bids this year, it's not uncommon. Material costs are higher, labor is short. So this unfortunate, but not unexpected.
Understood.
We did the estimate early February, so we kind of bowled by that.
Great. Thank you, Brian. Steve, you had a question?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could just, Brian, can you refresh my memory? So if we're looking at one point six million there, we had nine hundred thousand in federal grants on that?
Yeah, that's a federal.
The balance is stated?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any other questions? Go ahead, George.
Yes, as this Broadway project was into discussion and all that, the most I've heard from people was these handicap accessible ramps. That's what I heard. Let's get those done. And thanks to you for working on that, Brian, as well, too. And then as far as a contractor that will be doing, will they be doing all the work, the pouring or the forming, the pouring, the finishing? Will they be doing it all?
It's, there's some stormwater work to go along with it. Chippewa probably will sub that out. And then there's blacktop patching in the end. That'll obviously not be Chippewa either.
Okay.
The concrete work will be Chippewa predominantly. We've worked with them in the past. They've been a pretty reputable contractor.
Okay, and they have all the people that need to complete the job.
They are, they are a fairly big company.
Okay.
They do big highway work and stuff like that, too.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, George. Brian, I'd like to say real quick, I can only imagine that that was not an easy call to whomever to try and get those dollars back after the Broadway Road Diet Project had died.
There's a little gravel.
Yeah, so thank you for that, sticking your neck out and making that, reaching out for that ask is huge and we appreciate it very much. So thank you. George?
When would this project begin?
They're probably a month and a half out is what they told us. We did extend the deadline because Mindot took forever to review these plans. Probably a month and a half later than we expected them back. So we extended the deadline till July of next year. So they'll get a portion of it done this year and then complete it next spring.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Under new business, item five point one is the renewal of the Winona State University Transit Service Agreement.
I'd make a motion to approve the agreement and direct staff to execute the agreement. Second?
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point two is the Winona Transit Route Update.
I make a motion to approve the route changes that will begin Tuesday, September seventh of twenty twenty-one. Second?
We have a motion by Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Michelle?
I just want to commend Monica and everyone, Amy, that worked on this project, that got the input, the data we needed to reroute our system to make it a faster, smoother experience for the user. And I know it took years to do it, but I really appreciate the effort you put into that.
Absolutely. Luke Sims is included in that as well. So thank you, Luke. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point three is the Winona Transit fare increase for the dial-a-ride and doorstep deviation. Make a motion to introduce the attached ordinance. Second?
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point four is the updated ordinance for bus stops.
I would motion to introduce the attached ordinance.
I'll second.
We have a motion by George, a second from Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point five is the updated ordinance for two-hour parking at Fifth and Johnson.
I'd move to approve that updated ordinance. Second?
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point six is the updated Minnesota Department of Transportation Limited Use Permit for a trail on sixty-one and Huff Street.
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the limited use permit. Second?
We have a motion by Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion?
Can Ryan tell us a little bit about this?
Yeah, this is the same as the ones we had a month or so ago. It's just simply updated language is all it is. So there's nothing new or anything with the permit.
Okay.
Thanks, Ryan. George, any other comments?
Good, thank you.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point seven is the aesthetics plan for Mankato Avenue Project.
I'd make a motion to direct staff to instruct Mindot to use roadway C and the roundabout mid option with no colored concrete, no aesthetic lighting, and to look at the cost of boulders instead of granite. Well, what looks like tombstones to me.
Mayor, I would second that.
Excuse me. We have a motion by Michelle, a second from Aaron.
Sorry.
I believe they're called bollards.
Well, I want the boulders. I don't want the granite tombstones. They do look that way, right? Okay, it's not just me.
That's where I would like to be buried.
No, Carol.
Under the roundabout, right?
We can arrange that.
Under the riprap, please.
Any other discussion?
Oh, I need to add one more thing to my motion.
Okay, yes, please.
With the portion of the city's funds to come from the infrastructure fund. Are you okay with that, Aaron Rapinski?
I would second that also.
Thank you.
Eileen?
Oh, I just wanted to thank Brian for taking the time to go through everything in more detail with me and I think most of the other council members. Yeah, that was extremely helpful and I'm really happy with the option that we're choosing.
Mayor, I'd just like to make the comment publicly that this is probably the most cost-efficient to the city. Also, with the selections that we've chose, if people were to look at it in detail, they'll see that this is the least expensive route.
Steve, I think you had mentioned that we were kind of looking at an à la carte menu for this, which is essentially what Brian gave us the option to do. And in the discussions with, it sounded like all of us were pretty much in agreement on what it should look like without wasting any money along the way. Any other discussion, George?
Yeah, I believe someone, either you or the manager, mentioned something about patience. Now, patience with the bus routes. The patients will be tested well next year when this project begins. So have patience. It's all gonna work out.
Steve Sarvee, you got something?
Patience is great. Find a different way.
Yeah. Plan for one of the busiest routes to be closed.
Make sure that you're supporting the businesses. That's super critical to them, not only coming out of the pandemic, but this major construction project. So find your way back there, but try to avoid the area, the Mankato Avenue area, for sure.
Absolutely. Any other comments? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point eight is a certified local government grant agreement, financial incentives, education and outreach.
I'd make a motion to approve the attached resolution entered into the grant agreement and accept the two attachments of the certified local government grant agreement and the resolution entering into the grant agreement. Second?
We have a motion by Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion, George?
Whose signature is in department approval?
That is Mayor and Council. That's the signature of City Planner Carlos Espino.
Oh, okay, all right.
Thank you, Luke.
I've never seen that signature before.
You should have been a doctor, clearly. Mayor?
Yes.
I called Lucy to make sure we had budgeted for this because to be honest, zooming from home, I couldn't remember. So I know that money's in the budget to accomplish this next year. I just request, moving forward, if, when they prepare these for us, Steve, if they can write down where the money's coming from, because I don't always remember if it's general revenue or one of the funds. It would save time for me at least if I knew ahead of time where the money was being allocated from. Because I was sure we had voted to have it come out of the budget, but I just, I couldn't remember. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you, Michelle. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point nine is preparing the EAB or Emerald Ashbore Grant Application.
I'd make a motion to apply for the grant funds and a motion to submit that grant application.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Michelle, second from Aaron. Any discussion? Go ahead, Michelle.
John, can I ask you a question? I love that we're going to try to diversify some of our tree population and this looks like a really great way and cost-effective way to try to get more trees into the city. Is there a place where people that want to donate to the city's tree fund can put money? Because I understand if we buy trees through the program, we can get a lot more bang for our buck because of the size of tree you go for and maybe because we're ordering en masse. Is there a fund somewhere where they could allocate money? That's a question I've been asked, if they want to donate for our tree projects.
Mayor and Council, to my knowledge, we don't have a fund set up for that. So I, I'm not sure what that process would look like. Hey, Chad looks like he has something he wants to.
I'm guessing you don't want us to drop checks off at John's office and say, here, John, go buy some trees. Is there an option for them?
Mayor and Council, yeah, let's not promote that.
Yeah.
I think the most likely way to do that would be to work with the community foundation. But again, our department then would work with the community foundation to create a subset off the Park Rec Development Fund and that we would designate any donations toward trees.
So they just need to either send it with a note or write on the check for park trees. And then community foundation can let you know that there's been money put into the community fund for the park department? Maybe we need to think about this.
The short answer is yes, after our department would establish that sub-fund. So there's some work to set up that sub-fund. But if you'd like us to do that, I can contact the foundation and ask if that's possible. And then we can certainly make an announcement at future meetings that the fund is, that sub-fund has been established. And the reason I mention that is because I don't want to confuse it with the work that's being done by.
Friends of Winona Parks.
Friends of Winona Parks or really any other confusion with the several subset of funds we have at the foundation. But that is the, not to belabor this point, that is probably the most. For donors, I think they feel that is the most secure way to give a donation. I think there's a perception that if it comes to the city, you know, does it go into the Johns' larger tree fund or something? So to establish it this way probably is the best way.
How do we accept monies for trees right now? Because families have in the past made donations for trees to be placed in the park. Could that money not go through a fund like that that's already established? Since the goal of that fund was to put trees in the park, it's just that they were doing it in memory of someone?
So Mayor and Council, we do have a process in the Recreation Department, memorial trees and benches or memorial trees or picnic tables. We have a process for individual trees to be put in.
Okay.
But I think, at least, what I assume you're asking for might be a little bit larger project. Or again, as you said, it might leverage the ability to buy more trees. And in many cases, that's kind of one check, one tree, one check, one tree, and it's easier to process opposed to more of a fundraiser.
Yeah. Well, I'm just one councilperson, but I, I've gotten phone calls like that. I think, I think John could probably stretch their dollars pretty far. He's pretty good at it. So I mean, for my part, I would like that, but I mean, I don't, I can't speak for the council that way. But I, I would appreciate having a place for that money to go.
Mayor, I have a question.
Please.
Yes. So John, when will the city know if we get the grant?
They, they're usually pretty fast about getting back to us. So my, I think the application is due in a week's time. So my guess is that we would know by early September whether we get the grant and probably would be executed by Halloween, I would say. So we're able to plan, plan this fall for next year.
Okay, I'm really pleased to see that the money is going toward labor also. So it takes some of the, takes some of the stress off of our own tree department.
Yeah, so that is a key difference with this grant application as it is going more towards labor to, to plant trees rather than purchase the trees themselves.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, John.
Item five point ten is the Clean Water Fund Grant Application.
I would make a motion for the staff to apply for this grant and project work and a motion authorizing staff to proceed with the grant application. And I would ask that the money required for the city's share come from the Stormwater Fund.
Second. We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Steve. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'm really excited about this project. We all love Lake Winona and the phosphorus runoff is a real concern. And if we could capture some of that phosphorus, that, that would be fantastic. I'm no scientist or engineer and yet, yet what I read here really sounds promising. So very excited about it.
Thank you, Steve. Chad?
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to point out in this application that one of the infiltration basins is the former site of a playground that we had on West Lake. And just want to make that notation because there's a lot of questions about the department replacing that playground and having a playground at West Lake. I just want to make sure that we're upfront about that and that this wouldn't be a site where we would put a playground because it is in a low area. It's continually underwater. It's not a good location for a playground. So this does not mean that, you know, John and I have talked about this several times. Just want to make sure that, that we mentioned that, that we would continue to look for a different location on that West Lake for some type of play structure. But again, that area is not a good area to put that type of, I guess, facility back like a better word.
Thank you, Chad. Any other questions? Pam?
I just want to say thank you, John, for putting this together. These are wonderful ideas that we've, people have talked about for a while since we've all been concerned about, about Lake Winona. But thank you for getting it, getting this together to, to apply for the grant and make it happen. I'm really excited about the diversion of, of some of the water into the marsh. I think that's going to be really great. Yeah, thank you.
John, I do have one quick question about that diversion. I see in basically one route going in and out of that, that wetland area. Is it, is it going to inflow and outflow from there as water swells? Is that kind of, or is there another outflow that I didn't see on the map there?
So currently, the way the, the wetland is configured is it does flow out to West Lake.
Okay.
Via small culvert kind of middle of the path. And so the idea is that, that would hopefully accommodate that potentially. We would, we would certainly watch to see if that maybe needs to be enlarged. But the idea is that the water would really only flow, come from the creek into the wetland and then out through that, that piece there. But the wetland is pretty sizable. The total amount of runoff that'd be going in there from the creek is pretty small. So we're not, we're seeing a need to really change any of the hydrology there. But you are correct, there's just that one, there'd be that one path in and then.
And then just natural outflow from that point?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. George?
Yeah, John, long as we're talking about clean water in the lake, what is the status of the KARP update? I know there's a lot of them. Any, any plan yet to remove them?
We are hopefully going to be getting a proposal soon from St. Mary's University to be doing a kind of a formal study of the population and doing some tracking. So the, I think the objective is to know what the age classes are, if there are a lot of fish, if there, if it's a reproducing population, which we think is the case, and then understand where they're going in the spring to mate. I, my guess is that they're probably staying within the lake basin, but there is a possibility that they're going to that wetland area or going up to any other lakes. So, so hopefully we'll get that study started for this next, kind of next. So, so we should, hopefully we'll get that study started for this next, kind of next semester. And by, I think, another year's data, we'll be ready to say, hopefully start talking about how we can get those fish out of there, whether it's through commercial fishing or the archers or some other, other methods.
Yes, I know the presentation we had where they said the carp were definitely the problem in the lake, so. And that should be hopefully easy to remedy, so we'll look forward to the report.
Thank you, George. Thank you, John. John, I'd just like to say, almost every council meeting, we have a grand application from your department. Keep it up, buddy. Nice work. Thank you. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point eleven is the Park and Rec Department Software Upgrade.
Make a motion to accept and direct staff to execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, a second from Eileen. Michelle?
Chad, if I understand correctly, you have this in your budget to, to pay for this upgrade. Is that correct?
Mayor and Council, that's correct. Both are two thousand twenty-one, and then we have a small portion in the twenty twenty-two budget. But current funds are in place in this year's budget cycle to pay.
Chad, quick question. I, I didn't get a lot of time to read through it, because we got this agenda item late today. But I'm assuming this is for like signup of rec activities and stuff like that, replacing the current system?
Mayor and Council, that's correct. This does our registration for all of our programming. So that's youth to older adults. It does all of our membership work, aquatic center, senior center, friendship center. It handles all of our meeting rooms within City Hall and does all of the facility bookings, so Bieski Park Lodge, Holsinger, open-air shelters. So it is our, it's our main software system for what we call registration.
When, when do we think this will be turning over?
Likely in January.
Okay.
Of twenty twenty-two.
So the public should probably be aware that they would have to create a new ID and all that stuff. Okay.
Yep, that is correct.
Very good. Thank you, Chad. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Seven point one is council concerns.
We'll start with Councilmember Worskowski.
Thank you, Mayor. If we can at our next meeting or a meeting in the future have a pre-council meeting talking about public comments at our meetings. It's out there in the community. People are talking about it. We have not met as a council yet to discuss public comments. I know we talked a little bit about Zoom, but we can just meet as a group and decide if something we want to do or, or not do, whatever it may be. So, and again, we've already had a very interesting weekend, a lot of activity. And thank you to Michelle, to Tim Brieza, to Lee Gundershimer, all the volunteers, the mayor. You explained what you were doing, and you were looking very good doing that. Your arms got to be built up. But thank you to all the volunteers that worked that weekend and the vendors, and it was really a nice event. And to Aaron, who was doing the emceeing, did a very, very good job with that. So, and look forward to the event coming up next year. But thank you to all your people. I know you were one of the main drivers behind that, and you had a good crew there helping you out. So in the March of the Pomeranians, we can't tell you about, you had to be there to see it. To really experience it, and it was really, really quite an event, and I can only see that getting larger. Just a couple other things here. Councilwoman Moller and I, we were able to sit in on the interviews for the art team member, alternate response team member, and Christie Farrington, Jay Erasmussen, Eileen and myself. And Christie did a very, very good job. There's two people, and they'll be, from what I understand, offered a job this week, and they were very, very good candidates. Strong backgrounds and ready to take those jobs on. And I, I know Eileen will touch on it as well too, but I certainly hope that those, those two ladies will, will accept these positions. They will certainly make a difference, but very, very good candidates, so. And then also, on a sad note, the passing of longtime city council member Dieter Milamanka, who sat right where Eileen sits. I had twelve years with him, and Monica had more than that. But Dieter was a good councilman, and we had good meetings during, before, after, you know. He did well. He supported local business. He was a big voice for local business for the citizens. And, and he will be missed. And Dieter, just hang on, we'll be coming to meet you eventually, so. But to his wife and to his children, very, very proud husband, father and grandfather to be proud of, so thank you.
Thank you, George. Councilmember Alexander?
Well, I'm not going to touch too much on this weekend, because you both did it. But I do want to thank Coca-Cola, who was the primary sponsor of this weekend, as well as WMB Financial and all of our other wonderful sponsors of the year. We're finally getting it done. But I will mention that on September seventeenth, likely in partnership with Project Fine in Main Street, we're going to do a dine-out downtown, but it's going to be a potluck meal. We will provide the meat and the music. I think we have Loudmouth Brass coming back. And everyone else is supposed to bring their favorite family or cultural dish. And we'll sit down on Third Street and have a meal together and get back to community. And then on October ninth, we'll have Yanni Kohane. We'll have a Battle of the Pokabans as well as donut eating contests. I understand that President Olson would like to nominate Jerome Christensen to compete in the adult category. So we'll see, we'll see how that goes. We have a baking contest and a Superama that weekend as well. So believe you me, I will be touching on each of you to possibly judge for that if you're willing to eat some cookies and cakes. But we have some more coming up this year, and we're looking forward to our twenty-fifth anniversary with our sister city in Japan, hoping that they're going to be able to come next year. And our Polish friends still want to come back, but I think we're going to try to push that off to twenty twenty-two. But that's all I have tonight.
Very good.
Oh, wait, I have one other question. I'm so sorry.
No.
Chad, I got some Facebook, Facebook, I got some Facebook messages from people who want to do fundraisers for people with cancer. And they wanted to do a softball fundraiser, and they were told that they could not do them in the city because they're not sanctioned. Is there a way that these people can raise funds for, there's a young girl in our city who has cancer, and they want to do a fundraiser for her family. But when they called in, they were said because they're not a sanctioned team, they, there's liability issues and they couldn't do it. What would I suggest that these people do?
Mayor and Council, do, do you presume they meant to have like a tournament? Or just like a single game?
I'm, maybe it was a tournament. I'm not sure, because again, I was, it was a Facebook message back and forth. It wasn't a phone call. I, I prefer phone calls, because you can get your questions answered more smoothly. Let's assume they meant a tournament.
I mean, I think the only thing that comes to my mind is that i- if they ran into some difficulty with like reserving our fields and things, we have to have a permit in case someone gets hurt. I mean, that, that's really probably where the liability comes in. But there's nothing to prohibit them from doing a fundraiser. And it's much like if someone would rent Solbyski Lodge and have a fundraiser for someone, they certainly can do that.
So I should encourage them to go through the permitting process.
Or maybe re-contact.
And be more specific. They did talk to someone in your office, but they left feeling frustrated, because they were just told they couldn't do it. And it may be that terminology is, is the barrier there.
Sounds like miscommunication.
Yeah, so I'm, what I think I'll do is I'll have them come down in person, because it might be easier for them to see what they need to do. But there's nothing really in our code or in our ordinances that would say you cannot have softball tournaments that aren't through the city. They just need to pull a permit like you would for any event. Okay, that's what I needed to know. Thanks.
And Michelle, they can, you can always just give them my name as well. I can refer them to the right people, but I can get them started, so they, again, terminology and the initial communication is, is handled that way.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Sorry.
No, not at all. Thank you, Michelle. Councilmember Moore?
I really have nothing tonight, except I want to encourage everyone to get out there and enjoy the rest of the summer. It's going fast.
And the temperatures are great right now.
That's right.
Yeah. And one thing, I don't know if anybody's noticed this, mosquitoes have not been around this year. Weird. Yes, everybody knock on wood right now. All right, Councilmember Moller?
Well, speaking of perfect weather, I just wanted to thank the city and city staff again for working with the Shakespeare Festival. They closed their season yesterday with really perfect weather, and it was really lovely. And it was also my last season working with the Shakespeare Festival in that capacity. So very happy that we have handed my position on to a young woman named Jasmine, who is moving to the community to take over that position. So very, very excited to have her here. She'll be a great addition to the community. And also, I forgot the other thing I was going to say, because I'm extremely tired.
We can come back to you.
Thank you all. Bye.
Bye. Councilmember Young?
I'm good. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, great. Councilmember Rapinski?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, everyone's thanked all of the people that helped make KC twenty twenty what it is. But I'd really like to say a special thank you to the citizens that came out. As you said, I was part of the celebration on Sunday. And the March of the Pomeranians went well, and all the outrageous costumes. The ones that came to mind, of course, were the McNally's, Amy and her husband with the, the macho man on the pink. Was absolutely incredible. So thank you for all the citizens that came out. I do want to bring the public's attention again to the dog leash law. We've seen a number of things being passed around the council. We've talked about it. And just remind the public that the law does exist, and please keep your dogs on a leash. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Aaron.
Moving on to the consent agenda, there are six items on the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes from July nineteenth, an ordinance to install stop signs on Beers and Hilbert at the intersection of Third, an ordinance for handicap parking on Cal-Fremling Parkway, and three claims against the city.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second. I would move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Michelle, a second from Eileen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
The time, the time being seven, you know.
Twelve.
Seventeen, seven, twelve. And there being no further business to come before this council this evening, we do now adjourn.
Second.
Not? Motion by Michelle, a second from Eileen?
We do adjourn.
Oh, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.